We'll get started. Here, can you do roll call?
Chairman Lyons.
Here.
Commissioner Petty.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Milfe. Is absent for the moment. Commissioner Paugh.
Here.
And Commissioner Thompson is en route from some amount of wilderness. Oh, and Commissioner Moss.
Thank you.
Surprise.
I'm here, yes, I am.
All right, it's like we have a quorum and we'll get the meeting started. Want to double check that all the notices have been done correctly?
They have, and just to review, we've split this up into two meetings so that we can manage volume. Think these are some thick applications, so we wanted to allocate the time. And then the notices have already gone out for the next meeting that will be in three weeks. Two weeks.
May twentieth, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Also want to remind the commissioners if you had any conflicts of interest or if any ex parte communications for on any of the applications, please let us know at the time of that application. So, we don't know. I know the minutes got sent out late this afternoon. Has everybody had a chance to review or should we move them to the next meeting? Well, I mean, has everybody had a chance to see him at all? Did you see him, Tony?
Yep.
David, you had a chance to review?
No, I can see him now.
And I would recommend you punt to the twentieth.
Yeah, I just seen it by chance. So I think we will move those to the May twentieth meeting. So I make a motion, we move the approval for the April minutes to the May twentieth meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we do not have any preliminary development plan reviews for this meeting. We'll go to the consent agenda. Is there any questions on the couple items we have for the consent agenda? Or anything you want to pull out to discuss? If not, I'm open for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. With no changes.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Next up, moving on to full business now. Meredith, on whole business is the first item going to be continuing.
Continue to May twentieth. They've submitted the requested materials, but it requires some additional narrative to explain what you're actually looking at. So that will be prepared for you for the May twentieth meeting.
Okay, and that item is a conditional use twenty-three-ten for ten-twenty-two bitter root. So with that, I make a motion that we will continue this item to the next meeting on May twentieth.
Second.
Good question. Bill, do they need to specifically continue the public hearing? Or can they continue the item?
It was continued to this meeting for as a public with a public hearing open.
Yeah, I would continue the public hearing. Okay, because the the public hearing's been opened and is ongoing. And so we'll want to continue that, have a record of that being continued to the next meeting.
Okay, amend the motion to also continue the public hearing this item. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to continue the item with the public hearing open. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, motion carries to our next meeting. Okay, next item is the PUD twenty-five-oh-two subdivision twenty-five-oh-two Broken Ridge Commons. This is a public hearing, I make motion that we open the public hearing for this item. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, it's open. Okay, do we have Alex Sawyer for RISL? Call him, Alex? Yeah.
This proposal is to reopen a previously approved PUD. You have the scope, the scope of the project in front of you. It will be twelve micro townhomes for the works, a storage unit complex, a commercial component that will be a yoga studio or some sort of fitness center, a theater with a small kitchen for serving food, as well as a coffee shop that will be located on the in conjunction with it.
Do you have a link? Oh, no. Okay. Sure. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant at this point? We believe this was an item that we had done several years ago, six years ago.
That is correct, yeah. And and to add, the the reason that it was has been delayed is because of COVID area problems, not only with financing of the project, but also with just the the feasibility of the commercial component at the time. Didn't really make sense, a theater post-COVID wasn't really a nonstarter. So we believe now that we've reached a point where our partners and ourselves and the community at large will be able to utilize those uses and and we would like to move ahead with them.
What's the current status with this sewer?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Let's, I think there are some notes in here, but the current status with the sewer district as far as you're.
Oh, we we have a will serve from the sewer district.
For everything?
Yes, sir.
From the original application, the only difference is some of the square footage has been.
That that is correct. So in the newest application, the theater slash restaurant portion is about a thousand square feet smaller than it was before. However, we are keeping the same number of parking spaces. And additionally, previously was proposed to have either a small brewery or something on site with with that facility. We're not we're nixing that, we're not, we're not going to do that. And additionally, the the townhomes are slightly bigger than what we had proposed before by a couple hundred square feet.
So by losing a thousand square feet, does the configuration change radically or eliminating something or what?
So I instead of them being separate uses, we're combining them into one. So we will have a single theater that will have seating, obviously, for people to watch film, whether that's commercial or whether it's sort of stuff that's presented by local artists. But in addition to that, we'll have some seating for some tabletop seating for for dinner service as well as a small bar.
Does more intimate a bit?
It is, it is, I would say significantly more intimate than it was previously proposed. We do have a parks requirement, I believe satisfaction that parks requirement was also a fee that could be paid, which I believe is the route that that the owners are going to take in order to satisfy that.
Commissioners, any other questions before we go to staff report? Okay. Yeah, you can sit down. Meredith.
Hey. So this is bringing back to life a previously entitled project through plan unit development and subdivision preliminary plat so that they can then go on the quest to a final plan and final plat hopefully by the end of the summer. This property is still subject to the development agreement made at the time. So therefore, there can be small changes to design. But the general development program has already been agreed to by city council. So in doing this re-review, good question, Commissioner Petty relating to parks, we will probably need to update and go back to prac to make sure that the numbers still stand or whether those need to be updated for current market conditions, for example. But other than that, there are not major changes either to the code that occurred that would change this entitlement or the analysis. And the only changes to the application are are generally reductions in the intensity, but not a change in the development program itself. The rezone has already occurred, which created the development agreement. So the commercial uses are envisioned on that section of the Boydston corridor. I will note that one change that's occurred since the twenty nineteen time period is Boydston is no longer designated scenic route. But we did ask that the applicants keep the same landscaping program within the frontage along Boydston because it's a good community amenity. And then in addition to that, the parking spaces are remaining the same and that that's okay. I think that in twenty nineteen, there was a lot of discussion of is there a scenario of do you want me to put it on the screen? Is there a scenario of overparking? And I think that we've noticed with the first phase being built out and the uses that are being proposed, there's a good balance that exists within the application. The big thing to note within your staff report is probably one of the longest engineering reports you've ever seen. We did receive, so I'll let Morgan speak to that when we get to the engineering review. I did receive this morning from Payette Lakes Recreational Water and Sewer District an update to the sewer district comments that just confirms that there is adequate sewer for all of the proposed uses and floor plans that have been provided. And other than that, each agency indicated that their twenty nineteen comments still stand. The one thing that I've changed in the conditions of approval that I would like to keep the same if you were to take action today is that I'm recommending the place design review at the time that they come through for final plat for timing purposes so that the entitlement can actually be connected to the timeline for the construction of the buildings rather than the infrastructure beneath them. Just knowing the fragility of the market that continues to go on ever since the COVID pandemic. So that really gives the opportunity to get the earthwork, infrastructure work, pathway work done and then approach vertical construction when it is time to do so. However, the design plans are still in your packet for review of vibe or the experience and they very closely reflect what was approved by this commission in twenty nineteen. Other than that, I what I did was identify within conditions of approval in blue within the staff report where I recommended a change. So number six is really the major change. And then I renamed the development numbers in blue to update the the application titles. But it's generally staff's recommendation that the the entitlement be considered and deliberated deliberated upon in its twenty nineteen updated version so that it can actually be constructed according to the wishes of city council and planning and zoning at the original time of entitlement. And with that, I can stand for any questions.
Was there ever been a theater in McCall before?
There was, it was over at what is now Builders for Source. Used to be the Evergreen Theater, probably.
Okay, there used to be one downtown forefront down many, many, many years.
Okay, well, good luck. Nice, it would be nice to have a theater.
And so my packet doesn't have the conditions of approval on it to look at. But meaning is like, I think I mentioned before you, I think you mentioned it that the they've got to complete the commercial components in coordination with the residential, because I know there's no requirement that we had of that, so they couldn't build one without the other.
Yeah. And you're the development agreement expert on this one, Morgan.
Also, do you have the pictures for the I think it's the storage, it seemed like we had some questions before with some of the blank wall. I couldn't remember how those were. I think we're okay on those, but I know there were some questions before we had on those. Maybe a couple of the buildings that have some blank wall elements to look at.
Yeah, and so you could put in your comments that when you see a design review application, it should not include walls. It doesn't really have to be a condition of approval because it's a code requirement, so.
So that would be coming back to us? Again, with this one, what are they kind of looking for?
So on this one, I think the important things to note are, do you still agree with the development plan? It would be a really, really drastic decision if this commission said, no, check it out, do something completely different. But if you're feeling that way, it's important that you state as much in acknowledgement that there is a development agreement that would need to be revised and changed and everything. But for the most part, it's still compliant with code. It's compliant with the existing development agreement, which is what we prefer to see so that we're not just spinning the wheels on expensive processes over and over again. And in the end of the day, we really want to see projects actually get built if they're entitled. But I think the only comment that I sent out to you guys was from a neighbor relating to just maybe providing a little bit more specific construction management plan this time around, which is within your court to recommend. I think that we're seeing more and more with these infill projects that it can be challenging for the neighborhood experience, but that's also a symptom of living next to undeveloped property. So in this case, we don't really have rules relating to boom boxes and I don't really want to destroy the the construction experience for the person on site doing the work. But there's some general comments about being neighborly and having someone that you can call if something's too disturbing. Be appropriate. And we do have, Rachel, I don't know if you want to speak to the mandatory construction plan that goes through building permitting. But at a minimum level, there is a baseline standard for hours of construction and general noise level.
Yeah, that's correct, planner Todd, there is with with every building permit submitted, we request a construction management agreement and that does include what's based in the city code regarding hours of operation, light and noise disturbance in the following.
Pretty sure it isn't, but there is no requirement to send out any information to the land adjoining landowners on contact info or for if there's an issue other than calling the city.
Yeah, that's correct. I did inform Alex, the project manager, and he said, that's a definite concern that I would have acknowledged.
If it'd be expressed to him, maybe send something to the Broken Ridge Commons HOA board? Maybe just say, here. Here's a contact through the HOA that might alleviate calls to the city staff.
Yeah, you can request.
And something easy for everybody to do with fully.
Totally.
Meredith, so these plans are all from nineteen, right?
Some of them are marginally updated, just for date.
The rooftop.
Correct, yeah, so the narrative itself has been updated. You'll see all of those actual design corrections reflected after the infrastructure time period. We're balancing the previous record, which is the site and dimensions and everything with the need to actually make money or spend money to get the the site work done.
Oh, that site work must change too.
Yeah, a little bit. So the main one we're looking at is going to be page forty-two in your packet is the new. And the old one is on page. Shaded site plan. And the old one is on fifty-one.
So the new one on the micro towns, is that covered parking? It has gone on that perimeter when it was just open parking before? Or no, I guess it always covered parking on that one side.
Yeah, so they broke up the parking structures to be more separate and platted. Or Alex, is that the area that we talked about, storage lockers? Can you remind me?
Uh, I believe it is here.
So the change on those, let me go back to page forty-two. The change on that covered parking structure is to have a couple of those stalls taken up with personal toy storage for the micro townhome owners, which could be a car if you wanted it to be, but it could also be a kayak or after trailer that becomes a nuisance with surface parking residential areas.
Where it says self-storage here and it's just got like one big room, is that the way it would work if people just store trailers or whatever in there that you really want? How would that? How would you?
Meredith, I can speak to that.
The concept for the self-storage is that it would be a a single building with multiple storage units on the interior. We are currently thinking about making it two stories. So on the on the top floor, because of the way the grade changes in that particular location. So on the top floor will be five by ten units with an individual door. And then on the bottom would be larger open areas where people could store boats, could store snowmobiles, that sort of that sort of equipment.
Just a bigger courting office for like a boat and car.
Correct, yeah, yeah. But to to clarify, yes, there there would be individual units that would be individual with individual locks that people would be able to access. There would just be a single entrance at the front to the building. And then below, there would be separate partitioned off spaces for for larger equipment. My understanding is that that's not the case.
So is it a locked door on the side of the building? That's how you get in and out of there or is it garage door or is it?
It would probably be a garage door at the at the bottom. On the on the top level, it would just be an entry, a regular entry door. We could put a lock on it, we could put a keypad on it, but each of the individual storage units would also be able to be locked. Does that answer your?
Yeah, I just I just wondered how it would work and yeah, you answered my question.
The garages for the micro units or just all exterior parking?
Yeah, there's no garages.
I was gonna say, I don't think there's any garages there. Trying to see where all the.
Toy sheds for those individual owners that are platted along with, so that's these little ones.
Where's the park?
So then the parking remains here, 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 here. Each of these old ones, remember, have their driveway.
Yeah.
And then you have this full parking area down here. So there's still adequate parking.
Meredith, cut off.
Yes.
Those those parking, each of those units will be sized such that you will be able to park a single car in it.
In front of her.
Say again?
In in or in front?
Inside of, yes.
So they do have a garage?
They they will, they can act as a garage, but also conceptually, the idea was that if people had large, again, boats, kayaks, that sort of thing, it would give them a place to store those. So either work, but but yes, they will be sized so that that a car could fit in it.
We're talking the sheds, not the not.
Not the units, yeah.
Themselves, that's separate.
Yeah.
Thank you, Robert.
The, these ones that look like ease.
Yeah.
Those are the residential building. And then these little sheds exclusive to these buildings can be driven in, but do not have to be driven. They belong to them.
The boats and bikes.
That is not something that we distinguish in the parking code. If only everyone in McCall used their garage to house their car.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for Meredith before we go to Morgan with engineering?
Oh.
Okay.
Hello, commissioners. As you notice, this is a longer review from me, mostly because I've been reviewing this project since I started with the city, so about four years. And I just wanted to kind of jot down everything that I've been reviewing, where it's at, where links into this project and what comments might still be outstanding. So this is just a list of everything I've reviewed and where it is at this point. I did talk to Alex about my first set of comments there, the alternative proposal. This came through when there was questions about the sewer servability to their previous entitlement in PUD nineteen oh-three and they went through a site redesign briefly. And that was what showed up in some of the packet materials. With that, I said there would be a few other items that would need to be evaluated to move forward with that, such as hydraulic modeling and making sure the traffic impact study that was performed still fits with what was proposed. And then I met with Alex and he informed me they were not proposing to move forward with the alternative proposal because they do have enough sewer capacity to do their original plan. So those ones don't matter anymore right now, unless they do choose to go the alternative proposal route in the future. The traffic impact study was first submitted to the city in twenty twenty and was approved by ITD, which that that's kind of unique also because that has also been part of the conversation of including ITD with the potential. The potential thought that ITD may take over Boydston one day as their right of way. So making sure they were comfortable with what was being proposed. That was stated in one of the reviews, let's see, stormwater drainage. They have an original stormwater drainage report from two thousand eight that covered all phases of the Broken Ridge Commons development. In January of twenty twenty-two, the in the design engineer for the project provided a memo stating that this phase would comply with the original stormwater drainage report from two thousand eight and said that it would meet these these requirements. Let's see, the civil plans have been what I've been mostly working on with the applicant and refining those and getting those ready for construction. At this point, we're ready for DEQ approval of the water main improvements and the QLPE review. I just need a few checklists back from their engineers before we can review those for compliance with the state laws.
Morgan, can you state what QLP needs?
Yes, QLP is, QLPE is a qualified licensed professional engineer. So you can either have the state review the plans and approve them or you can have a qualified licensed professional engineer review the plans and the checklist that comes with it, stating that it beats the state requirements. So they're they're both the same, but it just depends on which route you want to go. If you want the state to perform the review or if you want our engineering office via consultants to do the review. So that's where we are with those plans. There's still a few red lines and comments that need to be addressed in those civil plans before we approve them for construction. Let's see. Water infrastructure, same comment as before, the QLPE review and we still need to determine meter sizing for the proposed buildings. And they are working on that. In the landscaping plans, they were proposing to plant to plant in the right of way. So that just needs to be scooted back onto the property and not in the right of way, like trees and bushes and things like that. And then in lieu of doing all of the public improvement. And then in lieu of doing all of the public improvements before building permit issuance, you're allowed to provide a financial guarantee for those improvements. So my next section is about the cost estimate and really refining that if they want to go that way and how we determine what the quantity needs to be for that bonding amount, that bond or letter of credit. So that needs to be refined before we can approve a bond for any building permit issuance prior to final plat approval. Then we have the subdivision plat, or the last set of comments I have in there. And I had some red lines that I attached to my review. And some questions about some of the parcel boundaries have different ownerships. And making sure that just gets resolved before we finalize the plat. And that is a general overview of my review. Please let me know if you have any questions.
You have a note about snow storage in the right of way as well? That's.
Yeah.
Or on pathway?
On the pathway. So on the pathway itself, going north, it's about less than ten feet away from building spaces. So I was just asking the question on how they propose to store the pathway snow with, with the buildings being so close to the buildings. They do have some areas that were not adjacent to the pathway that they were identifying for that snow storage. And talking to Alex, I mentioned like, it doesn't make sense to put those there if you can't physically get to the snow storage spot through the pathway. And it sounded like they were working on some revisions.
On the pink drawing?
Yes.
Is that a new sidewalk along Boydston?
That is the pathway, I believe that was required with the initial the initial plan. It used to wrap around the corner. And then they modified that to go through the the general, the general commercial area, so it's more storefront instead of the back of the businesses. And then it pops back out on dying heart, Boydston.
What's the shaded portion down further?
Which portion?
On the corner, yeah.
On the corner. So that, I believe, is the roadside swale. They are also building a right turn lane from Boydston. Sorry. Okay. Um, it is the, they are building a right turn lane on Boydston onto West Valley Road and a left turn lane from West Valley onto Boydston.
It's down there. Got a really cool vibe, but please was. Have any other questions?
Probably not.
I think the other thing to mention is this might be the largest scale development this group has seen. So it probably feels like a lot looking at number of units where they are in the process, scale of doing stuff. But the reason you don't have more at this meeting is because that is coming at a subsequent meeting when they're actually supposed to have all of the answers, which they're fervently working on.
I guess that's kind of what I'm, it's like, okay, well, there is a presentation that probably isn't going to be what we vote on for design review.
Correct.
And then how is it going to fit the development agreement? And that will all be your jobs.
Correct.
The next meeting stuff is going to be larger than that, as you say?
No, it's not going to be larger. It's going to be more detailed where we get into how many doors are on the buildings? How many windows? Where are the walls? Where are the rooms? What are the floor plans? How many drains do they have? Yada, yada, yada. This one, we're at the conceptual level. So Morgan, having a really, really long, detailed list at this stage is mostly because for the past five years, they've been working on the homework you gave them six years ago. And now they're asking for the right to continue finishing their homework that you will get to see in a later meeting.
Okay. And there is plans to have more conceptual views. There's what you have to look along the roadside, so we can see that.
Yep.
Landscape.
Yeah, and I figured
Snow storage.
Most of the time I will keep design review with preliminary plat. But in this situation, it made more sense to look at the, the site layout and the generalized plan views. And then as those buildings come through the process, we can pick each of them apart, item by item, and make sure they still fit the vision that we were feeling. And, and that was kind of how we ended up moving the pathway from the original time around was getting into the, the devil of the details at the staff level, saying, well, do we really want to go around this very, very busy corner? Or would it make more sense to fidget with the, the site a little bit? So those things will still come back to you and you will see what they look like as they come.
Alex, you intend to build it all at once? You intend to build it all at once?
Our design, our design agreement doesn't allow us, or development agreement doesn't allow us to build it all at once. We have to build it in phases. So, so phase one would be the storage units, the four live works and three of the micro town homes. The second phase would be the remainder of the town homes and then the commercial work. So we, we would break it into two halves. Per our development agreement, that, that's what, what is required.
So we won't see the movie theater for five years?
We, we hope to get the movie theater done quicker than five years, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for staff before we open up public comment? Okay, so this is a public hearing, so we'll go with a public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? You're muted, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. And anybody online or on the phone that wish to comment on this application? All right, is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application?
Yeah, my name is Rich. I have a, a town home at one-on-one Broken Pine. I have a comment.
Okay, Rich. Yeah, if you can give you a guess. Rich, anything?
Regarding this.
Rich, sorry, if you could give me your full name and address, please?
Oh. Sure, it's Rich Burr, B U R R, one-on-one Broken Pine.
Okay, Rich, you have that three minutes. Great, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a comment regarding the snow storage. I know that it's a big lot right now and it gets pretty full during a, a big winter. And I'm a little concerned looking at the drawing that was sent out of where that snow is going to be stored and if it's going to be blocking traffic going into these units. And also if it's going to impede any of the traffic going into the existing units. So I just wanted to make sure that I, I wasn't exactly clear on where that new snow storage is going to be. It sounded like it was going to be pretty tight. And that's a concern. And that's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Rich. All right, again, is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment? Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Okay, we'll close the public comment section. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay. That's quite the comment. Commissioners, any questions for staff at this point? And it sounds like we're just almost like a pre-planned point. I don't think we're really necessarily voting on this, are we? We would be approving the.
You would be making a recommendation on the preliminary plat and preliminary plan based on the criteria that we know well, that have not changed since the report times. Being twenty nineteen.
PUD and SUV.
Correct.
What do you think we see these more detailed drawings? Next meeting, meeting girl.
Well, the expiration recommended on here is they have to file for the final plat within eighteen months of being granted preliminary plat approval. So I would say within the next twenty months.
Commissioners, any other questions for staff before we close the vote hearing? And go to deliberation?
I do feel it could be much faster than twenty months.
Okay, there's no other questions. I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Second, have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. What are your thoughts?
It's the longest conditions of approval I've seen. But I don't, I think we're, yeah, it's to move it forward is going to be fine. We'll see more detail later.
Yeah. And again, we, we did go through all this with other than a couple of small changes in the past. I've seen that, so I think we do get more of the detailed ones that can dial in. Again, some like we discussed the length wall issues, the part fees and get all that dialed in, all the questions I think we have. At this point, I think the overall layout is very, very similar to what we'd already approved.
Now, I think it was my first Parkinson wreck approval as well.
So if there's any other thoughts or comments, I'm open for them.
The question about the snow storage, it, it's pretty much labeled all the way through this. That's.
That's the old one.
This is the old one here.
Yeah, but again, that's going to come in front of us, I think, in more detail.
Oh, I see, okay.
Right now, he's got it kind of generalized. Engineering and stuff, more of that.
Pretty big area to snow, yeah, for snow storage.
These are the two current entrances.
Yeah. The third one, too.
Yeah, I think we'll get all of that, get the other finite details. Uh, you want a motion?
Sure.
Question mark for Bill, do you, do they have to go through the criteria if we're reauthorizing something from the past? I'm so sorry, commissioners, for the torture that I put you through.
Do we need to open up the public comment? Do we close the public hearing? Or not public comment, the public hearing, because it closed.
No, I think that you can get legal directive. Yeah.
That's right, okay.
Well, so like the original approval has, has expired, is that right?
Correct.
Yeah, I would, I mean, I hate to, hate to be that guy, but that's just who I am. It's what I went to school for. Yeah, I think we need to go through the criteria, just so that we've got a decision on the record. We're treating this like basically a new application. I mean, I know it's been through before. But yeah, we probably need on the record some deliberation so that, you know, Meredith knows where you guys are at on the criteria and she can develop a recent statement on that basis.
Okay.
Sorry.
Make yourself more work. Do you have that in bullet for us then?
I do. I will put it on the screen, too. Okay, we will start with the PUD standards.
It's the only thing we're addressing. Oh, no, you didn't even say this.
So A, the underlying zoning, Title Nine of the code, which is the subdivision section and other applicable regulations under this title, which is three and Title Nine of the code are met, except as the applicant has specifically requested modifications to the standards as part of the PUD. You can also blame staff's analysis if you would like.
Yeah, so where's the, is the commercial been rezoned?
It has already been rezoned.
Great.
So it is more compliant with the zoning than it was before.
Right. So it does comply with.
So it does comply with zone.
And we'll say because it's been rezoned.
When was it rezoned?
Act. Twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, even before that. Okay, you ready for B?
Yep.
The proposed uses shall not be detrimental to the present and potential surrounding uses, nor shall they be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of the public. The physical features of the site, public facilities and existing adjacent developments and uses shall be considered. Are there any uses that give you concern? Pause.
No. No, I think everything is not detrimental.
Okay, C, the density of the planned unit development considered as a whole shall be in substantial conformity with the density of the underlying zone. The maximum density of the commercial zone is forty units per acre and we are significantly under that number.
There we go.
Okay, D, any variation from the basic zone requirements must be warranted by the design and amenities incorporated in the preliminary and final development plan.
There's no variations.
Variations. Winner.
E, the final development plan must be in conformance with the preliminary plan. Is this a final plan?
No.
Yep, good job. AF, the planned unit development must meet the general objectives of the McCall Area Comprehensive Plan. This is mixed use. It's got landscaping.
And the comprehensive plan did talk about this area. So it's a good area.
Yes, this is the West Valley concept area. Ten points to Samuel. Okay, G, existing and proposed streets and utility services must be suitable and adequate for the proposed development.
Didn't have a note about it, so apparently, yes.
That's a good because, great job. Okay, H, a development agreement is required between the developer and the city, which delineates commitments of the developer to the city and of the city to the developer, including but not limited to assurances for public and private improvements and maintenance of the same.
Yeah, they're the development agreement.
There is one.
And I, a PUD may be proposed in conjunction with an application to amend the zoning map and the comprehensive plan.
That is, this one.
Not applicable. Are you ready for the plat standards?
Sure.
Hardly wait.
Okay, number one, the proposed plat is not, okay, sorry, I have to give you your pre-question because these are all reverse psychology. Okay, the commission shall deny approval of the preliminary plat if it makes any of the following findings. So then we'll turn these each into a question. Is the proposed plat consistent with the applicable general and specific plans as specified in Title Three of this code or of this title, which is Title Nine? And the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Why?
Everything is consistent with the code.
Don't even.
Because they followed code and comprehensive.
I mean, they lost sixteen.
Okay, number two. The design or improvement of the proposed subdivision, it must be consistent with the applicable and general and specific plans. Samuel, can you recall in the West Valley plan? What was wanted?
It is consistent with the West Valley plan. This property was designed for it from the very beginning. I was part of that many years ago. It's better than this porta potty storage that was there.
Number four, oh wait, number three. Is the site physically suitable for the type of development?
Yes, it is. To be.
Okay. Number four, is the site physically suitable for the proposed density of development?
Yes, even under the density.
Number five, is the design of the subdivision or the proposed improvement likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially? or substantially unavoidably injure wild or their habitat?
Zone, that's what I can see.
Number six, is the design of the subdivision or type of improvement likely to cause serious public health problems?
No.
Better than a porta potty spot. All right, and number seven is the long one. Is the design of the subdivision or type of improvements going to conflict with easements acquired by the public at large for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision?
No, it's in, it's not in. Because you've already worked through that, actually, probably right away.
Perfect, thank you. Um, and in this connection, the city may approve a plat if it finds that alternate events for access or for use will be provided and that these will be substantially equivalent to ones previously acquired by the public. Um, the subsection shall apply only to easements of record or to easements established by judgment of a court of competent jurisdiction and no authority is hereby granted to a legislative body to determine that the public at large has acquired easements for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision. So we're thinking the pathway. No, just, just the ability to use the pathway. And that will be provided to us. Okay, and then number eight, is the proposed subdivision in compliance with all other ordinance or ordinances or laws of the city of McCall?
Yeah.
It will be someday. Anything out of those of you online, Dana?
No, nothing else to add.
Well, then with that, you may carry on with your events.
Okay, that, open for a motion unless we have any other discussion, commissioners.
I move to recommend approval of PUD twenty-four oh three and
Oh, two.
Oh, okay, wait, oh, two. And subdivision twenty-five oh two. To the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. The next item. We have this COP twenty-five oh one, zoning twenty-five oh one, design review twenty-five oh eight. At twelve forty Bitterroot Drive is a public hearing. I make a motion that we open the public hearing for this item.
Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, but then I believe we have Nathan here to go over in more detail.
Yeah. Can't get.
Where are they?
What page?
I have different pages for this.
One from a couple days ago.
Anthem. He might have got this.
Oh, which, what day?
Okay. Good evening, commissioners, city staff, Nathan Stewart, Public Works Director. Tonight, I'm here to present our water treatment expansion project. As you're aware, there's multiple land use applications to be discussed tonight. I'm going to start off by going over the basis of the project. I think the previous applicant stole my notes, so I'm gonna wing it from here. But as you may be aware, we've been planning this expansion for quite some time. Last May, there was a public bond election for the city to incur up to sixteen point five million dollars worth of debt to cover two, two major projects. One is a water storage tank project, which is currently going out to bid, and I'll explain a little bit about that. The second is this project right here that we're talking about tonight, which is our water treatment plan expansion. So in the city's water master plan, it's been identified that expansion of the system is needed about this time. Over the past eight years, with the data that we were just looking at, the system's been growing on an annual production of about two point seven percent. And the plant was built in the early two thousand, so it's about twenty years old. So the, the capacity of the system is limited and the demand is growing. And so planned expenditures and planned upgrades are what we need to do to make sure that the city has the water system that they need to support both the existing customers and planned future customers. So the growth in the water demand is exactly what we've been anticipating with these planning documents. So we're not seeing a tremendous change. Some of the things that we're challenged with are very seasonal variations, even hourly variations during the summer. We have a lot of irrigation demand and taking all of that into consideration is how this project is planned. So one of the things about our system is we don't have a lot of storage capacity to handle those fluctuations. So the water storage tank project accomplishes that, helps build in some buffer. So when we're, the plants or the customer demand is, you know, four hundred percent of what it should be, we can draw down from those tanks. But at the same time, we need to produce more water in general. And so this project creates three major components. One is a, a one hundred percent increase in the filtration capacity. We'll be going from two gravity filters to four. And that's important for a couple of reasons. One, because we're not planning on using all four for the life of this plant, but we need to be able to operate at least three while we have one out of service for maintenance. Right now, we're operating with two running full time in the summer. And so that's not a very good position to be in. And current DEQ regulations require that you have at least the operational capacity for one to be out of service. The second portion of the project is the expanded clear well, which I'll get into. And I'll show you a quick site plan by quickly join. And uh, got a couple of drawings pulled up here. And get back to it. So, so what you see in blue on this drawing here is what we're planning to expand. So the filters are in this area and my team is going to go into much more detail about this. But this underground clear well storage, it's a chlorine contact basin. We call it a clear well. It allows water to be produced much faster and thus we need more space for that water to spend contacting with some chlorine before we release it to the, to the distribution system. And then the third piece of this project, well, I guess I'll elaborate a little bit. We've got a little bit of covered storage or covered parking here, which is essential for operations in the winter time. And then a storage building to store equipment, to store vehicles, to store future equipment such as vac trucks and vac trailers, things that we need to continue to provide the services that we do. So that's the main scope of the project. And like I said, my team's going to come in and talk a lot more about that. I mentioned the project funding. We're, we're utilizing a DEQ low interest loan that we got through their state revolving fund. So this project is a federal aid funded project by America, has a lot of different components there. We've also applied for a community development block grant for the storage building. We, we will know soon whether or not we get that. And essentially, the project schedule is if we get through these entitlements, we'll likely be putting this project out to bid in the next couple of months. So with that, I'm going to introduce our team. First of all, on, on, on the, on the meeting, attending virtually is Sabrina Sims. She's our Water Systems Manager. So she's here to help answer some any technical questions that you have. We also have Ross Hanson, who's our project engineer. He's calling in from Great Falls, Montana, and he's been integral in helping us get to the point where we are. They are leading the design on this with a number of sub consultants from, from the Boise area and even McCall. So, and then with us tonight is Epicost Design. We have Wayne Rumely and Emily Bettine. Wayne's our lead architect and Emily's our lead landscape architect. So with that, I'll pass it over to Wayne. And Wayne, I have on screen here a variety of different drawings if you want to share with the, if you want to share those. So you've got, yes.
Everybody want to do?
Yeah, the renderings.
Yeah. Okay. That's all you.
Alrighty, alright. Good evening, everybody. Wayne Rumely, project architect here for this project. Oh, one thousand eight Bitterroot Drive in McCall. And the office is at three oh three Colorado Street here in McCall. So Nathan presented that earlier graphic, that site plan that showed these four areas in which the building is going to be expanded. Let me jump, let's see, how do I, am I just clicking on various items here? I can scroll maybe. Okay, so we've got some renderings. Do you know? I might need your help, Nathan, here. Where's the, like, just this hour site plan that, oh, maybe right there. Okay, here we go. So this'll, this'll be good enough. So the, at the top of the screen here is the expansion to the north. So the expansion to the north, that's where those filter. Well, so I always get the terminology wrong. The filters are, so the two filters to the north. So that's at the top of the page there. Those, that's the filter expansion. That's really the expansion of the, the building, the roof, all of that. That is in a location that was originally envisioned, originally planned for. There are pipes extending out of the wall in that location. And so that's kind of the logical extension is on the north side of the building there. Then we have the two covered parking areas here, one on the east side, which is kind of a shed roof design. And then we have another one here on the south side at the loading dock. Again, as Nathan mentioned, those are, those are critical for functioning for this facility to really operate in the winter, right? Emergencies that happen twenty-four seven, probably especially in the winter. And then this structure over here, as Nathan mentioned before, that's the enclosed storage facility. And, you know, keeping that equipment accessible in the winter and ready to go out during those emergencies. And then the storage facility also is really, I would say, probably one of the number one requests from the neighbors because there's, there's some equipment laying around the site. And so we had our neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago. Nancy's here in the audience. I'm sure she'll speak when it's, when it's that time to clean up the site. There's some equipment laying around that really needs to be put undercover, first of all, but then also to out of, out of sight as well. Interior, there's also some renovation work being done inside what we would call a tenant improvement. Some improved offices and map storage and some code compliance work inside there. Right now, the, the building, when it was built in, what was it about?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, so when it was built in two thousand, there have been some internal additions and things like that that were done for storage plans. Basically, they have rolls and rolls of plans for all the, you know, development around McCall. And that's not really in an accessible location, so we're working on that interior as well. The, one of the items. So it is located, you know, it's surrounded by Spring Mountain Ranch and Aspen Ridge. And so I know that, I remember when I moved to McCall, this was one of the things that was under discussion in Spring Mountain Ranch was the, the design of the facility and the construction of the facility. And so we've definitely kept the Spring Mountain Ranch design guidelines in mind. And some of those items are, you know, avoiding large blank walls, avoiding large roof areas. And there's a lot of emphasis on natural colors and design that fits into the landscape. So as you see here in this rendering, the, the expansion, this, this piece here is the expansion where we have the, we took the existing gable, lowered it, kind of break the roof line so that we don't just make a longer, bigger roof line. We are also matching the material wall. The walls right now are these kind of insulated metal panels with a stucco finish on it. And we were able to locate that manufacturer and they can match what was currently there. So trying, trying to match as, as with what was approved earlier. And then, so we're using, so we're extending the gable roof. This, this view here might not be the best view, but there's a little, there's a covered carport on the left side. This expansion on the north, yep. Okay, here to the south, this is a, an extension of the gable roof. So that's the covered deliveries. And then here in the trees, this is how that storage facility is designed. It's gonna be excavated into the hillside with an intentionally low profile so that the Aspen Ridge neighbors up above are seeing over the top of this. So we're, we're intentionally enclosing it or keeping it low. This here is the view, probably more from Bitterroot Drive, again, where you see the addition and the, the, the right portion of the, of the building there is the existing, existing structure. And we're adding over here on the left side. And then this one here, this, this one here is also probably most people see the building from here on Bitterroot, looking up through the trees. One question that did come up in the neighborhood meeting, there, there are a lot more trees on site than what we're showing. And, but we didn't want to get accused of covering it up or intentionally trying to not show you the building, right? So, so we're, we actually eliminated a lot of trees to make this picture. And then another item that came up that was important at the neighborhood meeting are that the, the storage facility does have garage doors on it. So twelve foot tall garage doors, you can tuck a, a backhoe away for the winter and keep it out of the neighbor's view corridor. And I think that kind of is really kind of a summary of the building. Oh, there is a slightly new color scheme to the roof. Gray, gray asphalt composite shingle. This, this one last image that came up, there, there is a, a blue color to the, the trim that is in coordination or matches the other water facilities, McCall's water facilities. This roof here in the trees looks a little blue. Again, in the neighborhood meeting that came up. And it's actually, the material is called lead, lead gray. It's a, it's a composite or a slope, a low slope membrane roof. It's gray. It's just something in this rendering made it look blue, so apologize for that. And then again, that came up during the neighborhood meeting when we, and when we presented the actual material samples. I think everyone saw those agree. And then I think Emily can jump in here as well. There you are. And we can talk about the site and the, the landscape considerations.
Thank you. This is Emily Bettine. I work at Epicost at three oh three Colorado and live at thirteen six six seven Farm to Market. So the site plan on this project is really trying to be as minimally invasive to the existing site as possible. I think the big feature of this site as people drive by is that there is a row of existing conifers right along Bitterroot that you see and they're growing up nicely and we want to preserve them. So the drawing you see does a good job of showing where the disturbance is proposed for the site. And so we have a couple of different green colors where the, the lightest grayish green is areas where there is existing vegetation that is going to stay untouched. There's beautiful ponderosa and other large conifers that are such a highlight of Spring Mountain and Aspen Ridge that we know and love to be part of McCall. And so by this being an expansion of an existing facility, we are not increasing the footprint of impact substantially. So most of the trees will be preserved. There may be a few. I know there's a couple at the the lower portion of the site where you see the, the L-shaped new underground. Clear well, thank you. So, and that area is going to need to stay clear for access and maintenance. So the whole area that you see that is a So the whole area that you see that is a lot of underground facility and structures all on the, between the road, the landscape, the existing landscape buffer, and then all of those utilities that are underground and all of the proposed will also be underground. We are proposing improvements to that area. Currently, the topsoil is not quite deep enough. And there's some weed issues. And so we're going to be amending the topsoil, applying an herbicide and reseeding with native grasses and wildflowers to improve the aesthetics of that large zone that unfortunately can't take a lot of trees because of the existing and proposed underground facilities, but we can make it look a lot nicer. And then, you know, while we're talking about level areas and snow storage, you see that the kind of a middle green, brighter green right around the building is where the snow is naturally going to make sense to go. So we are applying a firewise and xeric and low maintenance approach to this site. Because it is a city-owned facility, staffing is always going to continue to be an issue to consider. And so native vegetation that doesn't need a lot of water or a lot of maintenance, but still looks beautiful. This is going to be a great example of that for our community. So we have native fine fescues around the building in that green color you see with some large shrubs proposed along what is more of a blank wall along that north side. Not, I don't think it is truly a blank wall, but it, it needs some screening because we have a neighborhood that we're facing to the north. And, and those neighbors definitely, you know, appreciate the water treatment plant being their neighbor, but we want to make it as, as beautiful as possible. So large shrubs, deer-resistant, xeric, firewise design are all features of this plan. And so then you'll also see a, a small buffer around that proposed garage with a landscaped swale around the back of it for stormwater. And then we're proposing a grove of aspen trees along the south. Again, that's a firewise species that does better in that a little bit sunnier position and doesn't increase fire risk like a proposed conifer would. So we're keeping as many conifers as we can and then not putting new conifers right up against the buildings. So that's, that's the concept of the landscape. And then transitioning to our engineers. Yeah, Ross, if you want to jump in?
Sure can.
And Ross, I can move slides unless you want to share your own screen.
I'll, I'll go ahead and share my own screen, Nathan. Thanks. I'm Ross Hanson. I work for Advanced Engineering and Environmental Services over AE2S. I am out of Great Falls, Montana. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. I'm gonna dive into a little bit more of the technical need for the water treatment plant expansion. Got up on my screen here is kind of the, the layout that everybody's kind of looking at. So the current water treatment plant has a, has a firm capacity of 2.2 MGD with a peak capacity of 4.4 MGD or a million gallons per day. In the summertime in McCall, it is not uncommon for them to be at or exceeding 4.4 MGD in, in demand across the city. So the need for this expansion is, is pretty critical. So when this facility expansion gets completed, we will have a firm capacity of 6.6 million gallons per day with a peak capacity of 8.8 million gallons per day. Pretty significant increase to meet the growing water demands for the community. The existing filters are 16 feet by 16 feet in surface dimension. And they're about nine feet deep, deep bed gravity filters treating what I would call ultra pure water from Payette Lake. So it's a very difficult water to treat. So basically what we're doing is we're mirroring the two existing filters, keeping the treatment process consistent and adding two more filters. In addition to that, the, we're, we're addressing a lot of kind of aged infrastructure issues, especially in association with the electrical gear within the facility. So part of the expansion to the north, down in the, in the lower level, where the, where the pumping and piping goes is, is a new electrical room. We're gonna move a lot of the, then puts a new electrical gear in a new electrical room. We're gonna move the existing electric backup generator into a, a new room as well in that, in that area. Nathan mentioned the new contact time basin that's being added. Now, the contact time basin is a little bit different than a clearwell. Not to dive too far into the weeds, but this, this basin, all the water runs to this contact time basin before it goes anywhere else. Once it leaves the filters, we add chlorine to the water and it runs to this contact time basin first. And it's sized so that all that water runs through that basin. And by the time it comes back out and runs to the clearwell, it has, it has achieved contact time. It has achieved all the disinfection contact time it needs to be, to meet compliance with the EPA Safety and Water Act. So that is a, a crucial piece of infrastructure that's going to be added as part of this project to make sure that at 8.8 MGD, if you ever hit that capacity, that need, you, you will never be outside of compliance from a disinfection perspective. Another, there's a little blue box up on this screen up here by, it's called, it says backwash recycle. It's a little bit of a nuance on this project. It's not as of today, not required by the Idaho DEQ for them, for this to be to be performed, but it's not, I would say, within the next decade is probably going to be pushed very hard by the DEQ. Backwash recycle is a function to take backwash water after it's settled out inside the finish, the filter wash basin. And you pump it back to the raw water, back to the head of the plant. So you're conserving that water. You're not releasing it to sanitary sewer or some other waste stream. You're bringing that water back after it's had a chance to settle out. So that addition is shown on the, on the screen there. And then of obviously, the, the storage facilities there on the, on the, on the right, it's thinking of the, the, the critical nature and the need for the equipment to be ready at a moment's notice and just the sheer volume of snow that you guys see in the, in the wintertime. Having that equipment warm and dry and ready to go at a moment's notice is very, very critical need for the, for the water department. As part of this plan, as part of this project, we also, in order to go through the CUP process, we did some improvements to the site as far as stormwater is concerned. The, the site kind of has a high point in front of the storage facility. So we use that natural high point and gravitated all the stormwater that, that collects down to the main entrance point and sheet graded everything to the, to the south side of the main entry and added a stormwater detention pond right here in this, in the, in the corner of the parcel to make sure that stormwater doesn't go unmitigated. It collects here and then it releases slowly into the, into the road swell and crosses into the existing culvert there on Bitterroot Drive. So adding some stormwater management to the, to the site as part of this project as well. I guess, Nathan, is there anything else from a engineering perspective you wanted me to cover?
No, I think that's fine. And that's a lot of information. So if the commission has any questions, maybe this is a good time to pause and see if they have any questions for us. Any questions at this point for Nathan or staff? Ross, could you elaborate on the project schedule?
Yes, this project just actually went out to the DEQ for engineering review. Anticipate that'll be, we'll get comments back by the middle of June and address those. And we're looking to go out for bid the month of June or month of July, which would have us looking to do bid opening and contract award sometime, I would guess, in the middle of August. Which, this is a little bit different project where procurement, equipment procurement has kind of long lead times. So there'll be a kind of a six, six to eight months, I would guess. Kind of a delay just getting materials ordered and, and delivered. So I would anticipate that sometime in the May-June timeframe of 2026, there would be some kind of a groundbreaking per se to truly kick this project off. And the timeframe to construct, we're anticipating that by June, July of 2027, this facility, the expansion portion of this, this facility would go online.
Thanks, Ross. I know Meredith's put together an extensive staff report, so I think it's time to pass the mic to staff. Thank you.
Okay, question real quick. Any questions for applicant, Nathan, staff before we go to Meredith?
Thank you.
Morgan, so as the applicant's very large team has stated, this is an application for conditional use permit, rezon and design review to facilitate the expansion of the existing municipal water treatment plant. I will touch on mostly the rezon and design review element in here as well as mention, remind you guys that you have a table of the conditional use permit criteria within your staff report, but mostly describing the function of the rezon requested here within the dimensional standards table that I got in there yesterday for you. I put a note relating to the reason why a rezon is sought here is specifically relating to the way we calculate lot coverage in the R4 zone and throughout the community that is McCall. So anything that is a structure that is enclosed is considered 100% lot coverage as an object. So when we count up the enclosed structures of the backwash tank and the proposed clearwell and the other tank thing that is underground, although you cannot see them and they do not, I mean, they affect the site because they're there and they do stuff and you can't really plant big trees with big root systems on top of them. They do take up space and they have matter and mass. So we count them for lot coverage purposes as structures the same way we would count a house. So in looking over the lot coverage for the proposal before the application was submitted, it was determined that the lot coverage would be exceeded within the R4 standards, which is the zoning applicable to this site. And that the only way to accommodate this would either be through a variance, which we do not grant lightly or easily, or via taking a look at making a rezon possible that actually aligns with the use of the site, the expected use of the site, the forever use of the site as we know it. And then considers some dimensional standards to permanently place on them because the dimensional requirements for the civic zone themselves are probably a little bit too generous for a residential neighborhood. So the proposal that you have before you complies with the R4 zoning dimensional standards in all ways other than lot coverage. So it's been recommended in order to remedy that, that there be a rezon also to be consistent with use. This is not considered a spot zone as it does conform to the existing use of the site and it doesn't confer special privileges upon any other individual because it's very unique to be a water treatment facility. If the sewer needed to do something like this for a similar reason, we would address it in the same way, looking at the purpose and function of utilities within civic zones. So that's kind of the reasoning behind that. But I do recommend within your recommended conditions of approval and then in your deliberation setbacks, considering adding conditions relating to defined setbacks or keeping setbacks as related to the residential zone. So that if at any time in the future a code section changes that says the setbacks might change, we preserve the relationship of the existing neighborhood to the site in as much perpetuity as we can because it is a, a large building that's trying its best to look like a house, but at the end of the day, it is not one. So other than that, you have your conditional use permit criteria outlined on page. Two and three of this specific staff report, but 86 and 87 of your packet, the criteria from the code are in the left column and then the application response is in the right column. I can review, you review those in detail or we can hold the review of those in detail for when you get to your review in detail, item by item. Other than that, I stand for any question?
Commissioners, any questions for Meredith?
Well, I've got a question. I don't know if Meredith can answer this or not. The swale thing that you added there where the water comes down the side of the building and it filters out into a, there's a picture of it right here. Figure five, I guess it is. That doesn't look big enough to handle what you could actually have a, happen up there. Big rainstorm, something like that. And where, where does this water go? When it get, you know, gets into this swale and starts to fill up?
Yeah, yeah. Great question. So we have drainage management guidelines at the city. And so our engineering team applied those drainage management guidelines to the impervious areas of the project. So it is sized in accordance with our standards. And we fully expect that that basin will fill up from time to time. But it's very porous soils and we anticipate that that'll drain down. We're not anticipating that'll be standing water. And it's a maintenance issue. So as
Anything like mosquitoes and, you know, things that could happen in the summertime, that kind of
Yeah, I mean, I live in the neighborhood and there are, there's standing water everywhere. So whether this is going to add or detract to the mosquito population, I can't say. But the intention isn't that it would be holding water permanently, that it would slowly infiltrate over time in between storms. And it's also designed so that there's an overflow, so that if it does fill up, it's designed to hold the water quality event. But on a larger storm, it would overflow and go into the existing roadside swale. Does that help?
And there's, and there's a road in front of it and there's, it's like a smaller pathway on, behind it. It's just, and that's, well, that's the road.
That's the driveway. And, and what contains the water is there's a curb around all of the driveways. So the water, when, as the water comes off of the, off of the road, it'll collect in the gutter and then it will route down to that facility. Currently, today, we don't have any stormwater treatment facilities and all the water does that. So what we did is added a stormwater treatment facility so that we would come into compliance with existing codes. Added a stormwater treatment facility uh so that we would come into compliance with existing codes.
Any other questions for Meredith before we go?
What do you mean by, what are you asking us to do to find setbacks? As setbacks from where?
Um, so those would be setbacks from the property lines. Um, and you could define them as. What's included in this application, if you like where those ones are. Um, they are greater than what's required in the R4 zone as provided.
What about civic zone?
The civic zone setbacks are.
Cause that's what you're asking.
Yes. Let me tell you what the civic zone setbacks are.
You know, the sign, something.
Yeah. And then I will um allow an opportunity for um Wayne Rumely, the project architect to mention. There is a, there's a section in code that exists to handle this situation in the present, but I always worry about the future. Um, but first I'll tell you what the setbacks are. So the setbacks from an arterial collector or section line street in the civic zone are zero feet. The setbacks for any other roadway in the civic zone are zero feet. The setbacks from a property line not fronting a roadway in the civic zone is zero feet. And the maximum height is 50 feet, the minimum property width is 30 feet. So this is really envisioning like. The downtown core, the town square, the city center, civic plaza. Um, but it's also meant for places where infrastructure happens. And then there's a special little footnote. It says setbacks abutting a residential zone are the same as the residential zone setback to the subject property line. So currently these side setbacks are protected by this footnote. But I think it's important in consideration of this rezone to consider whether somebody in the future may ever forget that footnote. Because codes can always be rewritten, but entitlements are a little bit more complicated.
So then it's the language, something like. Setbacks, just a note that setbacks will comply with the residential?
I think you could use language such as um add a condition of approval. Which requires the setbacks to remain those of the R4 zone or the, the neighboring zone. Or you could be as specific as specific numbers. I think going with the zone is probably easier for future planner. Um. But it's really your choice. Does that help?
And this is in case Nathan wants to build 10 more buildings up there someday?
Correct. Or his successor. I don't know what the future holds.
So like right now, the garage or storage is 20 feet, right?
Yep.
And then the five foot setback on the north side is driveway, right? Not the building is 37.
Correct.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, any other questions for Meredith before we go to Oregon with engineering?
You're actually going to go to Nathan with engineering?
Nathan's going to do his own engineering?
Yes.
So there is an engineering review letter that I drafted for this to help summarize the engineering issues. I think we've been pretty detailed in talking about the. Treatment plant components. But uh, the, the principal improvement that we're making is adding, you know, adequate stormwater facilities with respect to. Things that you talk about. So um, that was an interesting. Uh, experience just trying to, to work with the site and say, you know, is there, is there a better way to do this or not? And, and to be practical about things. And uh, naturally that area just lended itself to being the best spot. We, we were concerned about making sure we could still get delivery trucks in there and, and that was a good discussion. So. Yeah, the general engineering issues that, that exist on that site, it's been there for a long time. We're well, we're very familiar with what, how things operate. I did mention in my engineering review that snow storage is always an issue. And where we currently store snow is where this new uh contact time basin is going to be located. So. We're going to have to modify the way we do business and um, and that's important. And it's also important to make sure that we train our staff properly. And if we damage um landscaping and whatnot, that we repair it. So I think that burden's on us to make sure we do it. And now at the end of the day, you have a big snow year, you might be hauling snow out of there. But you know, that's, that's par for the course.
Okay. Any questions for Nathan? Okay, thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, so we'll open up the public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're muted, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Okay, if there's anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment? Just need your name and address and you've got three minutes.
My name's Trey Johnson. I live at 1235 Bitterroot Drive, so just across the street on Bitterroot. Um, I'm the closest house to the sign that says City of McCall Water Treatment. I just have two aesthetic requests. First of all, I think the uh, they are great neighbors. They take a lot of pride. This is the best drinking water I've lived in like 14 states. We've been here for. For 20 years in Valley County, but um. I think they do a great job providing the community with fresh, clean water. Um, so no issues there. My, my requests are, I think there does need to be more landscaping. On the Bitterroot Drive side, uh, there's like concrete fixtures and um. You know, covers of like metal covers over some of the stuff that is going to, you know, now be where the unders. Area is. Um, and you can see quite a bit of the industrial building. Um, so if there is a way that that could be addressed. And then the second thing is. There's a sign that says City of McCall Water Treatment Facility. In a lot, like every state I've been in, water treatment is wastewater treatment. Um, the only request is can we just add the word fresh? Like. We take pride in, like the city of McCall has some of the best water in, in the world, you know, and can we just say fresh? Drinking is, is great, but yeah, just so that, you know, people from out of state or, or wherever. I think it would enhance the, the, the property values to know that it's, it's not a wastewater treatment facility. That's it.
Thank you.
Tom again. Uh, Nancy Lane, I live at 1300 Bitterroot. And have been living in this town 27 years, if that matters. Anyways, um, I definitely want to say. I appreciate having the neighborhood meetings. That was absolutely wonderful. And the discussion, you know, that I've been able to have after the meeting, since the meeting. And uh, I agree, I think the water treatment plant has been a great neighbor. Um. My goal in my comments. I think is to um. Request that we do as much as we can. I know the plan's necessary. But that in the approval, in the design, that we do what we can. To maintain. It's blending with the surrounding residents of, you know, of Spring Mountain Ranch. And um. I do think. I have, um, my predominant concerns are around landscaping. And I will say that in the neighborhood meeting, uh, I appreciate you coming today because I, I think that's great. No, that's great. Um, your neighbor next to you did come, but um. In general. I thought it was great that even at the neighborhood meeting, we had. Being that it's still winter or a shoulder season, that we had somebody coming from your side. Somebody coming from the cul-de-sac side and somebody coming from staring at the back of the garage, okay? And so I thought that was really good in having at least, you know, three perspectives there. Um, most of mine come around the landscaping and what I'm going to say is, you know, I don't think this is the time or the place in this setting to go through it. But what I want to point out is that um. Design guidelines required that we have 33%. For snow storage. And what is in the current plan today. Let's, let's just say that 33% translates to just under. 11,000 square feet of snow storage that is labeled. And the plan in front of you today has 17,000. And so I'm a bit concerned. That. I may be wrong and I may be generalizing based on the graphics, but it seems that. Everything inside the loop, the access loop. That goes around the primary building seems to be. Every tree that currently exists inside that circle does not seem to show up in the finished plan. And. That is concerning to me. It takes what we, what we strove for years ago. 25 years ago. In the first plant was to try and soften the look of that building. It's not meant. It's a civic building. And I'm trying to keep it with, I, I'm hoping that we can keep it with a residential blend look. And not a full industrial look, which is why I think the comment made about preserving the setbacks. And preserving just language that. Says to be consistent with the properties surrounding it. I'd like to think that that somewhat applies to. The landscaping look and feel of it as well. Um.
Need to finish up.
Yeah. So the other thing I will say as in part of going from the 17,000 feet to the. Uh, 11,000 feet. I would also ask us to relook at the definition of firewise, because the city code of uh, you know, section 3.8.4. Is very specific about what's allowed inside of 30 feet. And there's a lot more than just fescue that can be put there. And if we're going to adjust the snow storage. There's opportunity to do it. That's where I'm going to go. Thank you.
There anybody else in the audience that wishes to comment? Okay, back to any, one last time for anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application. Okay, with that, we'll close the public comment section. Commissioners. Me, or actually Nathan, if you want to rebuttal or answer any of the questions and.
Yeah, sure, let's do that. Um, I'm. I think we've got a couple exhibits to kind of hit to the point of the comment from the public. So what we've identified, and I guess I gotta share my screen here again. So give me a second. And Emily, help me out here as we go along. Um, so what Emily's incorporated here are some, you know, deer resistant shrubs. Uh, we're actually. Um, in response to some of the neighborhood comments, we're looking at putting in a wall here to help sound attenuate. There's a exhaust fan that kicks on when the temperature in the, in the pump, we call it pump alley. There's. A, a big row of pumps on the bottom floor and they generate heat. So. Um, when that fan kicks on, then you can hear a lot more noise coming from the facility. So one of the things we're incorporating to the final design is a, is a wall here that will help. Deflect that noise because the neighbor who lives directly to the south is up on a hill and it's like a natural amphitheater. Uh, so we won't be able to eliminate all of that, but that is something that we're taking into consideration. And so these shrubs will be moved. To the outside edge of that wall to help break up that, that wall. And I don't know if we have an exact height for that wall yet. But it will be sufficient enough to help block that noise. Um, but what? What Emily's shown here is, you know, this area is designed um for snow storage because historically we've stored snow down here. Um, and then similarly, we have some snow storage going along this hillside. Now. We can't easily plant a lot of trees along here because a lot of our piping. That comes out, that goes up to our storage tanks, comes out here and goes up the hill. So. Um, we, we don't want to be putting trees on top of our water lines in case we have to maintain them or get access to them. Um, and then similarly, we've got additional snow storage here. Uh, but still, uh, Emily's done her best job to try to plant, plant things in and around here. And the question was, well, could you put larger trees in here? And I think the real question is. Will they survive and will they grow to be healthy? And then does it comply with the firewise component? So. Um, I, you know, I think we have a variety, you know, we're, we don't have a lot of concerns about what we could or couldn't put here. Uh, but I think Emily has just tried to, to work with the design standards that the city's adopted. Uh, we have additional snow storage here. Um, and, and there's some additional areas for snow storage here as well, which is nicely screened. Um, from the property. I did pull up Google Earth to kind of show you what it looks like. And when Emily said, you know, there's a lot of trees, this is looking from, from majestic view. Where this building is going to kind of tuck behind these buildings. Uh, but if we get out of here and we go down to the other area where there was some concern. Um, you know, there's, there's no denying you're going to see this facility if you want to, especially if, you know, you. You look straight up, up the driveway. You're going to see it. Um, but with screening along the roadside. Um, we didn't even try to put all these trees in. In fact, talking with the city arborist. Um, there's probably some thinning that needs to happen here to make sure these, these trees grow healthy. Um, and then this outlet structure um has always been here. It was part of the original. This is an overflow that, that happens if, if the clearwell does overflow, it will discharge from here. So we do have some opportunities to come in.
Yeah, that's the other.
Yeah, this one right here, the, the sign. The, the sign, yeah.
No, the screen at the end, then if there are lower sh- shrubs or bushes or something that can be planted to just. Give it a, a more landscape look and less industrial.
Right. Um, and, and there are some limitations there. We may be able to plant some, some bushes along the side. Obviously you can't really put plants in front of this because this needs to function as a spillway. Um, and then as we move along, there would, there may be some um grading, grading issues that happen here, but. Um, it's really great that, that Google Earth came through town last year and, and really did a bunch of different things to. Um, so we can look at these different areas. So a lot of these trees are going to be preserved. I, I'd also add that we're going to be replacing the entire landscaping or irrigation system. Uh, and our goal is to try to use the raw water intake for that, so we won't be having to use treated water. Uh, so many of these trees that haven't gotten sufficient irrigation, uh, will be able to get some drip irrigation or some spray irrigation. Anything else you'd like to add? Can go back to the site plan.
Just to touch on the firewise, um, you know. Fire, fire requirements, fire, yes. Fire requirements and fire guidelines have been in flux over the last few years. Um, and different communities, um, like Tamarack, Brundage. Um, Whitetail have all adopted slightly different design guidelines regarding fire. We've been seeing guidance from. Insurance companies that have been really restrictive on homeowners. And so while. The city code offers some provisions that, that would allow us to put a new conifer within 30 feet of the building. Um, best practices in what we're seeing throughout our community and, and the nation as a whole with the fire landscape changing. It's, it's just not. It's, it's just not advised to put a new big conifer within thirty feet of a building. Um, I don't want to have to put it in and then have insurance or something come back and tell you, sorry, you have to take that out. Um, or, you know, worst case that there is a fire and that that conifer, um, acts as fuel. So, um, while. I love the big trees. I think they're so important on this site. It's really important and really beneficial that they stay at the perimeter of the site. So that actually is the best for the neighborhood screening from the outside in. Um, and we'll do our best with, um, aspen trees that are a firewise species and large shrubs. To screen the building, make it fit within the neighborhood. Um, and, and we can review the specific plantings, um, definitely with Kurt. Um, as we get through the bid process, um, because we do hear the neighbors and, and we want this to be a great example of landscaping in the community. So.
And Emily, this, the section that says amend topsoil.
Yes.
So to the north of the existing, is that just going to be fescue?
No, that is going to be more of a meadow mix. Um, if I have a picture of that. I don't. But, um, yeah, more, more of the taller, um, meadow grasses and taller wildflowers mixed into that whole zone. So, uh, not intended to be mowed.
Are those areas you could plant more screening trees?
Uh, very little. Um, you know, we could do a little bit more along the roadway. Um, but everywhere you see these structures, um, we really can't get trees.
I know Nathan's got pipes in the ground, but it looked like a little. Quarter circle there, there might be.
Yeah.
Are you, are you thinking like in this area here?
Yeah.
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 Um, certainly. And, and again, and I think it has to be considered for what's the benefit? Um, because when you look at that area. Now, this is what you're looking at, right? So we could potentially, you know, working and particularly with the idea of which of these trees are unhealthy and which trees need to go so that they can grow more healthy. The reason we put the note in the plans was to say. If we're gonna, if we're gonna clean up a bunch of trees that are growing too close together, can we properly space a few more trees? That could, you know, then say, okay, this tree is going to grow to be a nice size in this space. Let's plant a tree here because there's seventeen trees in the small area. They're all going to outcompete each other. Um, and that note is articulated, I believe. Right here, right?
That's just to replace, like where you see there is some grading shown, um, with the kind of blue vertical lines. Uh, if any trees do come out within that area, um, to replace them with, with a similar tree, um, as appropriate. We did have a note, it might be in the notes. Here. I think it might be that one. We're talking about the thinning of the trees and.
That's the same.
That's the same note. Well, there is a note on the plans that does talk about, uh, how we do want to thin and limb up the trees to, um, their best health. Uh, for their future growth and, um, I'm not sure where, where it turned up, but, uh.
I remember that.
Yeah. And so, so yeah, we've been meeting with Kurt and, uh, his team does the maintenance on this site. So, um, city arborist will be maintaining these trees. So that's another great example of, um, the best person for the job. But, uh, yeah, there's, there's quite a few species out there and, um, we just want to keep adding native species, uh, where appropriate.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
If there's any other questions for Nathan?
I got a question and it's kind of more of a logistics question. And where the one that comes for, for this treatment plant, how much of it percentage wise is pumped out of the lake? And, and are, are there also other wells that you're?
Yeah.
That could contribute to that amount of water? Cause you get, you said you're going to get to six point six billion gallons. Was that a day?
Right.
Or could get to that, that.
Sure, over time.
Is the, is the, the capacity out there to, to do that? I mean, I understand the filtration system a little bit, but I don't know much about water treatment plants. And is there a restriction of how much you could pump out of the lake?
Right.
And it's to keep the, the, the numbers where you want to be.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, all great questions. So, uh, we, we take all of our water out of Payette Lake. We have two intake stations, one at Davis Beach and one.
So it all comes out of Payette?
Correct. Yep. We have no wells. Um, and the color scheme that were, for the trim color would match what you see down at Legacy Beach and at Davis Beach. Um, as far as the, the, it's kind of a slate blue color. It's a darker blue. Uh, and the renderings don't do it. I think the color palette, um, document that you provide is probably the best example of what those colors will look like. And the, to the question about water rights, we have, um, relatively junior water rights. Um, we have some senior water rights and junior water rights. Uh, ironically, Idaho's full of water and so we pay very little to buy unused water rights currently.
And that's the, uh, what rest for, for Payette Lake that you're taking?
Correct. Yep. So as we conduct our water master plan and we'll be doing another water master plan, uh, starting this year. We've actually applied for a grant for that as well. We're waiting to hear. Um, our staff of consultants and, and water rights experts will look deep into how, how much of risk are we at water rights? And there's been discussions about potentially available water rights down in Cascade that we can use to offset, you know? There's a lot of discussions about that, but that's what our water master plan functions for. In two thousand eighteen, it was identified that's low risk, low cost, systems working. A lot of these water rights aren't being used. We, I think we buy water rights from Deadwood Reservoir and it's less than twenty thousand dollars a year, uh, which, you know, we're running a three million dollar operating budget. So it's, it's really relative, but the climate could be changing and those water rights could become more expensive. So every five years, when we look at our water master plan, we may decide we have to get more water rights. But for current, currently, we're, we're in good shape. So.
So it's a difference between a, a short-term, uh, water right and a, and a long-term water right.
Yeah. I'm not a water rights expert, but essentially the first person to secure the right has, has that right. And as long as the water's there, they get first right of refusal. And so when the water dries up, everybody else who came after them, they have to stop using the water. Uh, so we're, some of our water rights are older and some of our water rights aren't very old. So we get cut off probably by June each year. And the only way we can continue to pull water out of Payette Lake is to buy unused water rights from other irrigation districts. And again, that system's working well and as far as we understand, it's stable, but that's what our water master plan will evaluate.
Interesting. I didn't know that, that, that was the way it worked. Thank you.
You bet.
Right. Any other questions? That will pose the public comment. Uh, commissioners, any questions for staff before we go into deliberations? All right. That I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you both? Right, close. Okay. Discussion. I think they went through pretty much all the items pretty in depth.
So Chairman Lyons, as a reminder, I need to recuse myself from this discussion.
Okay. He's noted Liz, office recues herself. So with that, I think we'll go, as we do now with each application. So we, we can go to the, uh, U P items we have on here.
A, number one. Does the use constitute a conditional use authorized in the zone involved?
Yes.
No, wrong answer, Samuel. Sorry. But I have to tell you when you are not correct.
What was the question again?
Use proposed constitute a conditional use in the zone?
No. Oh, two, I guess, huh?
Okay. As stated in your staff report, water treatment plant is not a defined use in McCall city code in any zone whatsoever. So therefore it is eligible to apply for a conditional use permit.
Since you already answered all these questions.
I would advise you to potentially read from your staff report at this time.
Page eighty-six.
It's not a quiz. But it kind of is. It's an open note test. You feel good with one?
Yeah.
Okay, number two. It shall be a harmonious with and in accord with the general objectives and with any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and/or this title, which is title three about planning and zoning.
It does. Does because they're doing nice design and landscape work and the roof matches.
Do you feel that there is anything, any thoughts you have relating to harmony?
Not changing dramatically from what it's been currently.
All right, number three. It must be designed, constructed, operated and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or likely character of the neighborhood. And that such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area.
Yes.
And why?
Well, the presentation was pretty thorough and, and both put together, it sounded to me like it's a lot of planning. It's going to happen when they can start on a project, it's. Any other?
Same within the design review guidelines of Spring Branch as well. And it's been in existence for twenty years. There's like additions.
Good.
Okay.
Okay. Number four, it shall not be detrimental to the health, safety and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use.
Not be in detriment and it's a plus because there's more water available during the summer when we need it.
Okay, number five, it shall not cause any substantially harmful environmental consequences to any land or waters within the planning jurisdiction.
And it's existing and to feel that it would cause any environmental harm. You're fine for it.
Number six, it shall not create excessive additional public costs for the public facilities and services. And it will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
But it's already funded. That's great. Cent for that, that is less than otherwise, but that's good.
Okay, number seven, it shall be adequately served by essential public facilities and services, including highways, streets, police and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, water and sewer and schools. The applicant may be required as a condition of approval to mitigate any deficient public service.
As noted, it is an essential public service.
Yeah.
Very special water.
Okay.
And it's upgrading some other facilities with the stormwater as well. So it's making it even better.
Okay. Number eight, it should not involve uses activities, processes, materials, equipment or conditions of operation that will cause unreasonable production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odor or other forms of pollution.
How many employees are going to be?
I don't know, and I can't tell you that when your public hearing is not open.
I just was kind of curious. It's kind of runs itself.
There's multiple employees.
Good.
Testing the, yeah, we can't, it's additional name, but. Um, they are putting in a new sound wall there with a vent fan. Again, there's plenty of screening. Offering to add in extra if needed, if any of it's being taken out, I believe. And I think some of the enclosures of the building is going to enhance the visual aspect of it. You won't have as much equipment or hopefully no equipment stored outside.
Number nine, it must have vehicular approaches to the property so designed as to, as not to create a detrimental interference with traffic on surrounding public or private thoroughfares or adversely affect the pedestrian environment.
Already have them.
Yeah.
Okay, number ten, it should not result in the destruction, loss or damage of an important natural scenic or historic feature.
Real historic features and taking at any large trees.
Think you're asking us to, um, take care of the natural features with additional landscaping.
Yeah, it's going to be a real upgrade for landscaping, I'm concerned, I think.
Most of it's there.
It's going to be a real upgrade with landscaping. It's going to look, it's going to look a lot different, right? Yeah.
Remember the public hearing is not open?
We can't have more public comment.
Okay.
Yeah. That, that was the last caption.
Okay, eleven. It must be on a site of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed use, including the yards, open spaces, snow storing walls, fences, parking areas, loading zones and design standards applicable.
A true question, isn't it?
It's not a true question.
Does meet the lot coverage.
If it's rezoned.
When numbers are approved.
So, yeah. As part of this, if it's rezoned, then yes, it will be.
Yeah.
When it's rezoned, it meets.
Okay. Number twelve, it must have a minimal negative economic impact on the neighborhood or surrounding community.
Should be no change.
Be a change.
You wish to incorporate any change to the signage? This could be a place to consider that.
I was going to say that that's probably the most historic part of the site, but.
Thinking the same thing. But yeah, we would like to see that considered be. Enhanced with the type of water treatment. That covers the. Initial use permit items. We have zoning items we need to.
So zoning is a fairly squishy and discretionary action. And I'm going to bring in our friend Bill Punkinney to tell us how making choices on zoning works.
Yeah, sure. Um, thanks, Meredith. So, uh, I, I mean, I think the staff report, um. I mean, it, it covers it fairly well. I mean, I think that we're looking at, I, I think a change in zoning here and. Commissioners, I mean, this is a, it's a pre-existing use. We're simply expanding it on behalf of the city. And so, um, you know, there's not really a lot of like specific criteria to use. And so instead I think that, um, you know, the board should, you know, generally direct Meredith. If you, if you agree to, uh, the proposed map amendment and rezoned. And I mean, do you think that this is an appropriate use in the area? It'd be hard for me to see how it wouldn't be.
Okay. I feel it's appropriate there. I'm kind of surprised it wasn't rezoned previously when there were some other civic area zones updated several years ago. But seems to fit with that and it's clearly going to be civic for pretty much ever. As there's no numbered criteria, we don't have to go through.
No, this would be the space where if you want to talk about, um, like setbacks being a condition of approval or, um, recommending any landscaping to be seen by city council. Um, or if you wanted to see it come back, um, this would be a good space to do that as you can set. This would be a good space to do that as you can set reasonable conditions of approval upon rezones. And it would be a good space to express any sensitivity to this being an island of civic within a space of residential.
That in consideration. I think it would make sense to at a minimum keep the residential setbacks. This, I believe, the current buildings and everything are beyond that at this point. But just to ensure that nothing encroaches in the future. And we don't have to rely on that one comment bullet point underneath the requirements of a civic zone. But I'd like to see that that would be maintained as minimum of the residential zoning setback. Other R four residential zoning setback. Any other thoughts on the zone? Okay, that, you had a design review list.
Okay, and finally, the design review criteria. A is the project in general conformance with the comprehensive plan. And why?
Pre-existing use, but making it compatible. Changing during the rezon, but it's part of the essentially been part of the comprehensive planning because it's been there.
B, does the project jeopardize the health, safety, or welfare of the public?
No, it's true.
Well, it is part of the health of the public.
Yeah. Improves, hopefully.
Yeah.
A, C, project must conform to the applicable requirements of the zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance ordinance as enumerated in three point one six zero one, which is the purpose of design review.
Yeah, well, and even more so when we have the reason.
D, the project will have no substantial impact on adjacent properties or on the community at large.
As long as we have drinking. And it also addresses additional stormwater.
Okay. If applicable, a subdivision design review document has been reviewed and approved by the commission in lieu of design guidelines. This is not. Yeah. Okay, with that, that's all of your criteria.
Okay. Well, with that, commissioners, any other questions, thoughts, concerns? I think we've addressed the setbacks. Believe they're okay with snow storage and we have a bad year. I mean, there are some additional areas there. I think they've noted. City knows where a dump truck is and backhoe if they need to. Turn it over. So with that, if there's any other thoughts or concerns or questions, I'm open for motion.
And in your motion, don't forget the setbacks because they're not in your conditions.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you want them in zoning or CUP?
We do each one.
Condition of approval.
No, we have to.
And then do your motions later. But yes, do them all individually. Good question.
One quick question, the, where are we gonna? As part of the zoning, we're going to add in that modification wise for the designer view and the CP are going to be. We haven't changed anything.
I think what you could do is make a most um, is move to add a condition of approval. And then you can make the motions on the application numbers. Recognizing the modified conditions of approval.
Okay. So I, so I moved that we add the condition of adding, maintaining the setbacks of the R four zone within this civic rezon parcel. We have a second.
Second.
Right, we have a motion in a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that is approved. Motion on each item for final. I moved to approve designer view twenty-five oh eight with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
You can say as modified.
As modified. Great.
Second.
Right, you have a motion in a second to approve design review twenty-five oh eight, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I moved to recommend approval of zoning twenty-five oh one to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval as modified. Second. A motion in a second to approve, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, as approved. And I move to recommend approval of CUP twenty-five oh one to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval as modifier.
Second.
We have a motion and second approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, most curious. Thank you very much. Okay, so take a little bit, does anybody need a break real fast? I'm finally moving forward, we just got two more left, but we're all good, we'll continue to move forward. Commissioners, good. Okay. So we'll move on to design review with twenty-five oh two and Shoreline twenty-five oh fours, six oh one Diamond Street. This is a public hearing. So I make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
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 And we have Liz back with us on this one. So then Luke Vanoy or?
You guys serious, okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so Courtney Snyder with McCall Design and Planning, one twenty-one Commerce Street.
I'm Luke Vanoy, McCall Design and Planning, same address.
So, um, can we pull the drawings up, please? Okay, um, so this is an application for design review and shoreline review. Uh, it's located at six oh one Diamond Street. Zoned R four, currently there's an existing residence, it's a family cabin. The cabin is currently only used in the summertime and it gets winterized every winter and the family would like to be able to use this year round. So we're proposing to, they would like to demo portion of the cabin, which would leave about five hundred and twenty-one square feet of the existing, which is in the setback, you can see there on the south side. Um, and then add a two-story addition with a single car garage. So the total build out, including the existing, would be about two thousand one hundred and ninety-one square feet. Something else to note, the existing cabin, because it does get winterized, it is like a lot of the family cabins in McCall, there's no foundation, poor insulation. And it's not up to current code, so something we'd like to also do is add foundation and stem wall and properly reinforce it. We're not going to modify the cabin, just kind of bring it up to code. Uh, and then we'll have the addition on there. So you can see where the existing cabin sits, it's not shaded in, and then there's also an existing deck off the back, which overlooks towards Davis Beach and Payette. And then that newer shaded area is the addition. Uh, you can see the existing survey there too. So Lance, oh, sorry, go ahead. Landscaping plan, um, you know, there's a little bit of some flower beds at the existing there that would remain and then propose to add maybe an aspen tree and some other bushes to shield along the new proposed covered walkway. Uh, and then as well as adding a couple trees towards the north side to shield from the neighboring property. There are a few trees to be removed, a couple in the driveway, one on the north side of the addition. And then there's also a pretty significant tree on the north side of the deck. That is already almost right up against the existing house and the deck, so propose to remove that as well. Uh, if we go to the next slide, you can see this is the existing cabin. So the portion with the northeast view of the existing cabin, that is the section to be demoed. Uh, the main living spaces of the cabin will remain. Slide down, you can see the deck of the existing. The floor plans, so on that bottom left, you can see our demo plan. Um, again, that existing dining, living, and kitchen area is to remain, the inside will be remodeled so that it's a little bit more functional layout for the family. And then the addition mostly consists of bedrooms that are of more. You know, the sizing of the bedrooms right now are about nine feet by seven feet. So proposing to give them a little bit more space to have, you know, full-size beds and some space to move around as well as a single car garage and place to store some other beach items. Couple elevations of what that new addition will look like. We are within the half-height setback. Maximum height proposed on that north side is about twenty-six feet. And then scroll down to those three Ds. So a little existing versus proposed on the upper images there. So again, you can see in that west view proposed, the portion of the cabin to remain. And then towards the north there is the two-story addition. I'll go to the next page. Again, just a different view from it, so you can see on those south views, that's kind of the view from, um, Diamond Street. And then the east view without the garage and what adding the garage would be. And then currently, right now, there's a, the, proposed to keep the same colored siding, match everything to the existing. The roof would go to asphalt shingles, um, but otherwise to keep all of the existing color scheme that is currently on the existing home. Okay.
I'm going to go grab the drawing in the staff report that we acted, um, since the half-height building setback location is in a very weird spot. So, Courtney, I don't know if you want to describe this image that I have to use.
Yeah, so that angle line is the, is the half-height setback. So from where the setback is to the house, we have about thirteen, just under thirteen and a half feet, and so our half site, half-height allows us the twenty-six foot ten. And so we hit that at about twenty-six foot nine and three-quarter. So that's just, just showing you that we are right there, um, but we are within that required setback at the highest point of the addition.
So with that, we'll stand for any questions and, um, I just also like to state that the, the owner is, uh, available, the applicant is available, um, you know, by phone, she's logged into this meeting, um, to address questions as well.
All right, commissioners, any questions for applicant?
You have zero setback on the roadside, is that correct?
So what we're dealing with here is a, is a non-conforming project, and we're doing a code conforming addition to it. So the nonconformity can, can remain so long as, uh, our addition doesn't make it more nonconforming.
I just, is that Diamond Street, it's not another piece of property, is that correct?
Yeah, correct, that's Diamond.
Commissioners, any other questions before we go to the staff report? Okay, thank you, Luke.
Yeah.
Meredith.
Okay. As Courtney and Luke reviewed, this is an application for an addition, additions greater than five hundred square feet. Especially those located in the overlay zones such as the shoreline required design review by the commission. This addition is greater than the size of the structure, so it, it really takes on the character of the entire property. But it's done so in a way that complies with the non-conforming structure codes. They did have the building official out to look into the, um, foundation challenges of the existing structure. And so they have a plan for bringing all of that into a degree of comfort and compliance that has not been experienced since original construction. So other fun information of note. The residential addition is going to be two stories where the existing structure is generally one. So your form and scale are going to become altered in this process, um, but that is not out of scale with the existing neighborhood. There's increasing numbers of two-story structures in this, um, older area of town. And that seems to be a symptom of more grandchildren and more people wanting to, to play around near the lake. But this is not in no way near the size of a lot of the things we're seeing further along Warren Wagon Road or East Side Drive where we're seeing things butt up against the maximum structure size of ten thousand square feet. This is nowhere near there. I don't know that there would be a way to actually get that many square feet on a property of this size. As Commissioner Petty asked, um, there is a small encroachment of the eaves of the existing roof line, um, some chimney. Chimney will come out because the masonry is failing. Um, and then some trees that are within the generally undeveloped right-of-way. The applicants have been notified, the owners have been notified that those are within the right-of-way. We don't have a plan to drive a bulldozer through them, um, but if anything should occur, don't be surprised. If something will happen, there will be notice, um, we're not planning to, to do anything chaotic down at the end of a dead end going into Davis Beach in that location. But we try to make it very, very clear when we have encroachments in right-of-ways that it's an encroachment and there's a right-of-way, everyone be unnoticed. Um, other than that, this structure is in no way eligible for historic listing, so the date of construction is fun, but, um, that, that isn't a concern to this Historic Preservation Commission. I think it's fun that we get to keep a really old segment of an historical-ish building of the time. Because it's growing more and more unique that we have those buildings. But I think adding on to it gives it longer life so that it doesn't have to be a complete demo and restart. Um, the zoning is kind of a patchwork in this area of R eight and R four leading into, um, the State Park parcels. Um, and then we do have Davis Beach over to the west side, so, um, that setback half-height line that we saw is actually facing the lake. Um, so that is their interior side setback where their interior side neighbor on that side is, um, the city through Davis Beach Park. Um, where there is also, Tony, to your previous application question, that's where one of the water intake stations is, um, in participation with the parks process. Other than that, your dimensional standards chart, um, does show zero foot setback on both the front setback onto Diamond Street as well as the side yard setback towards Davis Beach, and those are existing non-conforming structures that are not being. And those are existing non-conforming structures that are not being changed. Um, so this is really a creative design for the site. Um, being able to use it mostly to the maximum extent possible, um, but they've been very careful in, in where to go and where not to go. Um. Other than that, I would note, just in this presentation, that, um, the applicant should probably check in with home insurance before marrying the asphalt shingle idea, um, because this is one, in one of our neighborhoods where we've been seeing the insurance industry dictate roofing material. Um, so if you guys are open and willing to a roofing type that is in compliance with whatever insurance cares for, they've been requesting metal more and more often, um, either for discounted rates or, um, for remaining insurable at all. So it's important that I, I put that note on the record. There are colors and tones that look similar to the grayishness of asphalt, um, but it's not a code requirement that people have insurance. So. Personally. I wish it were, it'd be a good idea. Um, but other than that, you have the design review standards and shoreline standards. And I did receive, um, a comment to be read into the record on behalf of a neighbor um, that may require this application to be continued to iron out some details, but we can get to that when you open the public comment period. And it was received at four twenty-eight today.
Right. Uh, commissioners, any questions for Meredith at this point? Okay, go to engineering's market.
Hello commissioners, I'm pretty, I'm pretty simple on this one as well. Uh, the applicant has already received final engineering approval from me. Um, they submitted all their stormwater reports and updated site plans and floor plans, so I could wa- size their water meter. Uh, everything worked and I sent out my approval on April twenty-ninth. Just let me know if you have any questions about things that we've submitted.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? Oh, that's pretty clean on that one. Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public comment. Uh, is there anybody on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application? Again, if you're muted, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself.
You have no mysterious characters on.
I would, I'd like to reiterate what, what Luke said that we are on, unfortunately, we were traveling. Um, today, we were unexpected, planned to be there in person and not. I'm Megan Fuller at forty-eight thirty-five North Villaridge Way, and I don't have anything to say unless there's comments presented that, that we need to respond to. We weren't aware of any challenges to this application prior to today, so. I'll stand unless there's something presented that I feel like I need to respond to.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is there anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Your name and address, please.
Do you have that? I have, uh, no problem with them.
Need your name and address, please. Your name and address, please, for the record.
Uh, my address is six oh five Diamond, right next door to the property.
And your name?
Bob Wood.
Thank you.
If, um, I don't have any problem with the construction there and, you know, if it's okay with, uh, the planning and the building, uh, you know, with the zero plot line, that's fine with me. I just have, um, one thing, i- in Davis, uh, track at there, if you're familiar with that, almost every property in there has got some weird, uh, property line that goes back and forth and everything. And so, um, we have, uh, a ten feet that's on our property and they, they think it's on their property and we have a little bit of dispute questionable about the property uh, of ten feet on the east side. I noticed in the plans, it doesn't seem like it's being used as part of the construction or part of the thing. But I want to make sure if that is, um, you know, a driveway or something like that, that then I would be opposed to it, as it stands right now with the property there, I'm perfectly fine with them going ahead and, and building it. Just as long as they don't use that ten feet. And. It's just in question, so thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Okay, is there anybody else here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application?
Uh, Meredith, can you clarify if the letter from the attorney needs to be read into the record?
We can't comment right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's still open for other additional public comments, even do part of the rebuttal once we get done with.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna read this attorney's letter into the record that I received at four twenty-eight today. Um, and then, uh, the applicants are, you're, we're welcome to go through the, the public hearing process, but Bill Pankin, he does have some specific instructions for what to do after we read this letter. Um, so you might ask him for instructions after I finish, um, if there are any other people. Okay, um, so this was received from Fred Coriel at the office of Millman Pemberton and Home. Um, this firm represents Robert Wood, who owns property at six oh five Diamond Street McCall, Idaho. Mr. Wood just informed me of a potential significant issue with approval of applications, design review twenty-five oh two and shoreline twenty-five oh one, both of which are scheduled for public hearing on May sixth, twenty twenty-five before the McCall Planning and Zoning Commission. This issue relates to an approximately three hundred and eighty square foot strip of land lying between Mr. Wood's property and the applicant's property. In October two thousand and two, Mr. Wood received a warranty deed from Homer G. and Gail I. Powell Trust, recorded as instrument number two hundred and sixty-six, one eight-six in the Valley County Recorder's Office for real property described as, I'm just going to enter that the legal description exists because I don't want to read it. Uh, simply, Mr. Wood is the presumptive owner of all lot two except for a twelve-foot by thirty-eight-foot strip of land in the southwest corner of lot two, which is owned by lot one. While subsequent instruments purport to amend this legal description, none of them were recorded with the knowledge or consent of Mr. Wood. Importantly, since acquiring the property in two thousand and two, he has continuously occupied, maintained, possessed and paid taxes on all the property deeded to him. However, applicant's materials indicate they intend to construct a driveway approximately ten feet to the east of the deeded property line right on top of Mr. Wood's property. In fact, applicant's materials depict Mr. Wood's propane tank, which has been used for heating his home for decades. It is also unclear whether applicants include this ten-foot piece of property in the lot coverage calculations and setback requirements. Clearly, applicants believe their own property that Mr. Woods has claimed, uh, Mr. Wood has claimed as his own for over twenty years. Mr. Wood therefore requests that the applications be denied because they are based on an erroneous assumption that applicants own all the property they intend to develop. Alternatively, Mr. Wood requests that the applications be tabled until such time that this dispute over rightful ownership of the three hundred and eighty square foot strip of land is just, is, is resolved. If it is possible to include this letter in the packet for May sixth, which was not possible, please do so. Otherwise, Mr. Wood intends to make public comment regarding the same. Thank you for your consideration, Fred Coriel.
Okay, all right, Bill. Thoughts?
Yeah, I'm really confused by this because we've, we received this letter at the eleventh hour, um, making some pretty significant and serious allegations about the ownership of the property, which is one of the fundamental preconditions to any kind of land use permitting. And then we heard testimony, I think from the same Mr. Wood that hired Mr. Coriel, which appeared to be in support of the project as presented. Um, I don't know what to believe here. Um, I think that, you know, there's a base level of organization that needs to go into making an objection to this kind of hearing. And I think that, um, you know, where Mr. Coriel is gonna make allegations that bring, uh, just bring into question the ownership of the property, um, for which the owners are, are, I mean, there's no way that they're gonna be able to provide the necessary evidence for us to, to make a determination about whether that dispute has any merit at all. Um, and so under the circumstances, um, I, there's nothing we can do but table this to our next meeting and ideally, the parties will work this out and include the city on, in, on whatever, uh, resolution they're able to reach and they can report back to us at the next meeting about the status of title. If it is that there's a legitimate dispute over the status of title to this property, there's no way we can permit this. And that's something that's gonna have to be shook out in court. So, under the circumstances, even though we've received a significant conflicting information, we do have this letter in the record that does make, if true, uh, allegations that would be fatal to this application on its face. So, on that basis, rather than completely killing the project, I s- I s- I suggest we continue the hearing to the next meeting and let the applicants and their neighbor, uh, work this out or inform us that they can't work it out and then, uh, take it to court.
Hey, Bill.
Happy to, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, since we just had the public comment, do you suggest that we continue it at this point or allow the applicant a rebuttal?
Yeah, I think, um, I mean, the applicant can, can provide us with a rebuttal and, and maybe they've got their complete title history ready to go. And even then, you know, I'm gonna, I would have to look at it. So, I mean, the only way this application moves forward is, there's, there's two ways really. One, uh, you know, they come to some sort of agreement and there's some sort of withdrawal of this objection and comment. Or two, they submit sufficient evidence that there's appropriate ownership of the property that supports the project. Which, I, I mean, I would be completely astonished if they have that kind of material available to them today. So to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we can let them rebut today, um, if they have some meaningful way to rebut. I, if I were the applicant, I would just take, I would take the, take, allow for the, the continuance and then rebut at the next meeting when we've had a chance to figure out what's going on with the neighbor, what's going on with his attorney, and, uh, either have that withdrawn or, um, you know, ident- provide us with additional information about, uh, ownership of the property. So that answers your question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
All right, do we need to reopen? No, it's still open, so it's still open, because that was still comments, got it. All right, with that, uh, Luke, would you like to rebut or any additional information or rebuttal?
You know, I'm not, I'm not a property attorney, but what I can tell you is I, I go about my job as an architect. Um, when we initially meet with people, we look at the city and the county's GIS that identifies the property lines. Then we have that confirmed by a professional land surveyor. We've done both of those things here and we can show you the professional land survey that shows the lot lines that we worked off of. Um, we can bring that up now if you let us share our screen. I think it's also in the application package.
Yeah, it's also in the application package.
On sheet one. Um, and I can show you I, what I believe to be the, uh, part of the parcel in dispute. Um, but, you know, a professional land surveyor is the person that we use to determine lot lines.
Meredith, can you put that, um, cover sheet back up for us, please?
So I gue- it would seem to me like, and, and I don't want to split hairs and get down in the weeds if this is gonna get continued anyway, but when I read back through that email string, that was a draft letter from Fred that Fred never sent. Uh, on April twenty-fourth, he sent this draft letter to Mr. Wood and he said, would you review this? And then it then shows up in Meredith's inbox at four twenty-eight on the day of the meeting. So it, to me, that, it, it seems unfair to continue this when, uh, I don't think a legitimate claim is being made here and we're losing really important construction time. This was a project that we are actually fast-tracking and doing construction drawings in conjunction with entitlements, which we rarely do because the applicant wants to get on the project during the building season. So, okay, if you look at the lot here, there's a, um, where our driveway is coming in, it jogs out. And you can see, um, that there is actually, uh, two descriptions, um, one that shows, uh, let's see. Well, if you can see in the, the northeast corner, that overall says twenty-one eight-three. Um, but then there's a, below that, there's a ten-foot, um, notation. And that, I believe, is the chunk of the parcel that they're disputing. It's very confusing because all of these lots got split up and, um, the lot lines got adjusted over the years. And so what once was lot one actually, I believe, ran from the south edge of the Fuller's property to the north edge of Mr. Wood's property now. So he owns parts of lot one, all of lot two except for this chunk, and then parts of lot three, and, and it's, it's a really hard thing to confuse without that original old plaid in front of us. Um, and then all the different lot line adjustments over the years. But, um, you know, this is what Dan Dunn, um, certified was the Fuller's property when he performed the survey. And this was done in, um, July of twenty-four.
Bill, and any thoughts on that, or are you still?
Yeah, so, um, what's the name of the gentleman that was just speaking, and I presume he's from Crestline Engineers?
Yeah, Luke. It's Luke Vanoy.
Luke Vanoy.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Vanoy, are you and Crestline Engineers prepared to ensure title to this property?
Yeah, no.
And, and that, I mean, that, that answers, I mean, and I don't mean to, I'm not, my intention is not to, um, I don't know, be aggressive about this and quite the opposite, but my perspective is protection of the city and the P and Z Commission. And, um, you know, to that point, um, you know, this letter unfortunately was sent and it raises enough of an issue uh, and question about the title that, you know, we're not, we can't, we don't want to kill the project, but we, we do, we do need this to be resolved. And, um, before, before I could advise the P and Z Commission to move forward with the decision, under the circumstances, the best that we can do for the applicant would be to continue the hearing. And if they can come back with a resolution at the next meeting, then, uh, you know, certainly we could move forward with our determination on, on the basis of the remainder of the facts. But, under the circumstances, the parcel is in dispute, we've received an objection that makes a colorable claim, whether that's true or not. Um, I don't think we have enough information to determine. Uh, a survey is, is simply, it's, a survey provides us with no evidence of title. That's not what a court would determine, uh, a valid claim to title. It's not the evidence a court would use, it would use the chain of title, um, and probably conflicting surveys. So, under the circumstances, my recommendation stands. I, I mean, I appreciate, I appreciate the passion for the project, but, you know, where you've got this kind of claim, uh, against your title, you, you need to take it up and I would take it up pronto with, uh, Mr. Coriel and his client. It's not this, this is not the city's fault, it's, it's, there's an objection and it's a colorable claim and we would be putting, uh, the city at risk and, and, and the P and Z Commission at risk of, of, uh, significant claims if we were to permit this moving forward.
Okay. With that, I think it's pretty clear.
One more option, just to comment, if there's an option for approving with conditions.
Yeah, go ahead, Megan, because you are the applicant.
Just, is there, is there an option to go on ahead and approve it with the condition that this be resolved? Because Mr. Woods himself, I mean, Luke pointed out that we had the survey done on the twenty-fourth of July. I sent it to him on the twenty-sixth of July, I sent him an email on the tenth of October. Uh, he followed up with me on the tenth and I talked to him on the thirty-first. I sent him multiple instrument numbers that are recorded where he has assigned to his trust and then back to himself the legal description that we're using. And so, I, I mean, all of that is legal documentation that's with the county and it does represent the property we've been paying taxes on, that we have to, the right to do this. And while that is true, and I can, you know, work through damages through a different venue, which is not your guise, and I appreciate that, uh, I would prefer to have the approval so that once this is cleared, I can move forward with the project using the limited building schedule we have. And, and not just, it seems super unfair that I lose a month of construction schedule because he shows up at the fifteen minutes before the hearing with this letter and, and I've been working through this issue and quite frankly, thought it was resolved because I got nothing back from my email that provided him the two deeds where he's deeded this exact legal description we're using to himself. Like, it, it is part of the county record and that isn't part of your guys' purview whatsoever. You have to assume that we, we're coming to you with the, with the legal description and the property that the county says we own and we do. I mean, I, I, so I don't know, I'll just put that out there. I trust you to make the right decision for the city as, as someone who intends to be a member of your city, I respect what you guys do and I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, Bill, back to you with that thought. As far as approval with conditions of approval, that they get it resolved before anything gets final.
Meredith, I'm looking at three sixteen oh seven at the design review criteria. How common is it that we put this kind of condition of approval on a design review? This is a design review and a scenic route?
No, just a design review and shoreline.
And just a shoreline, okay. How common, how common is it that you'd put a, a condition of approval on something like this?
Not.
Yeah, that, that was kind of my, I mean, I'm looking at three sixteen oh seven and I don't see any provision for that. And unfortunately, we're bound by the statutes. Our intention is not to slow your project down. And, I mean, if you think it's unjust, you gotta take it up with your neighbor here. I mean, he's made these claims that you're using his property and we can't permit a project that's on his property. And, but the county can say it belongs to you, but the county doesn't decide. In the end, it's a, it's the, it's the court. And so, I would suggest that we continue it to the next meeting. Meredith, when, when is our next meeting? Is it the twentieth?
We have one on the twentieth. Do you think things like this spin around that fast potentially? I don't know.
Well, it seems like the parties are pretty passionate about this. And so, I mean, I would be in, if, if at all possible, if we can wedge this in, because we've got all the other information, we probably need to make a decision on this application, except this. And so if they can come back to us and say, well, release the objection and, you know, the parties agree that there's no infringement on Mr. Wood's property rights, then, then yeah, I mean, it, it's not gonna take an enormous amount of time. And if they don't have it resolved, then, you know, we can table it for longer or, or, you know, they can come back when they're ready.
Okay, thank you. I think, considering the information that we've received, I think it makes sense to allow them or continue it until the May twentieth meeting in hopes that they would, they'll do that. It's luckily this time we have two meetings this month, so it's only a short, hopefully a short delay and then the applicant and the neighbor can hopefully get together and, and resolve any potential issue with the boundary line. I do know areas around there, it's definitely a bit different. There's ten feet off of here and there. Some of that old, older subdivision areas. So hopefully it's something they can resolve quickly. And Dan knows what he's doing, but again, it's an area that different parcels have been carved up over the years. So I don't think we have the option to go against Bill's recommendation. And like I say, luckily, we've got a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, so hopefully they can get it resolved. I don't think we have any other choice. Now, if there's any other thoughts, hey?
Make a motion that we continue.
With keeping the public hearing open.
Here, twenty five oh two and Shoreline twenty five oh four to May twentieth meeting and public hearing will remain open.
Let me make sure you got the shoreline number correct.
Shoreline twenty five. Twenty five oh one.
Give me a second.
Just a second, she's making a motion.
I might have given you the wrong number. Yes, can you correct the motion to twenty five oh one on shoreline?
Motion as adjusted to twenty five oh one.
Second. Right, we have a motion, one second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any votes? Nope, here you none, motion carried. We can, you can just be in touch with your neighbor. We tried to push it to the quickest meeting that we have, but like you say, it's May twentieth, so hopefully we guys can be together and we can finish this for you and make our, our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, move to our next item, which is annexation twenty five oh one at Coconut Cove with Pondrosa State Park. It is a public hearing, so I make a motion that we open the public hearing. Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, with that, I'm not sure who we have, who the applicant makes presentation.
You have Adams, Eric Goza, and Alyssa Jensen.
Alyssa Jensen with KM Engineering, five two seven, or five seven two five North Discovery Way, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven one three. I'll try to keep it kind of short, let you guys ask me the questions. So we've already been in front of you once already. We've been in front of city council already as well. I'm here representing the Parks Department. We are asking to annex a piece of the park into the city for the use of city water. Currently, we are operating on good faith and have run the water line through the parks already. It, it came about because we were, we were planning the last piece of development in Coconut Cove and as a part of that, we were displacing some employees. So the Parks Department stepped up and said, hey, we're gonna build some employee housing. And so a part of that, we were required to put in fire sprinklers. And so, a, as we were thinking about fire sprinklers and then the future development and just kind of where the park stands itself, there's just not any reliable water, water source through that park. In addition, there's no fire suppression through the park as well. And so, at that time, we met with Morgan and her team, Nathan, and started talking about looping a water line through the park. Everyone seemed in favor. And just hit a hiccup that we needed to actually get approval to do it. So, where we stand right now, in order to service the last piece of Pondrosa State Park, Coconut Cove, we are not, that piece of the property is not within city limits. So we are asking to be annexed into city limits. It's about thirteen acres of land. So we can use, use city water. In addition, there are some conditions as a part of the annexation. So phase one of the water line, like I said, we've, we are, are installed. Our residence housing was, happened to already be within city limits, so that's up and running and being used, which is fantastic. As a part of that, phase two, it was requested that we hook the three campground loops up to city water as well. So we've actually submitted those drawings to engineering and I, I know they've been received and are currently being reviewed. So we've continued to move through the process. But obviously, we are not approved to be annexed into the city yet. So that's why we're here this evening to hopefully continue our application through the process and annex the Coconut Cove into the city. And I have some graphics if we need to pull it up or if you have my application or maybe everyone's familiar. I'm, I'm, anyway. So, with that, I'll, I'll stand for questions and we'll go from there.
Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
So the, you're asking to annex like the whole route of the water line, not just the building in Coconut Cove?
Yes, it's required that the whole water line, the easements and the buildings be annexed as, as a part of this.
God.
Where's the water line come, come out of the lake or?
No, it comes, it, it comes out of Creek Road?
Yes.
Yeah. And then we've looped it around into, like, where the U of I campus is over there, so that, that there's one big loop.
Okay, I see. Are your campsites on a well now or how were they serviced before?
Currently, there are no, oh yes. The, the campsites aren't a well.
Okay.
I was, I was thinking Coconut Cove. I'm like, there's not anything out there anymore.
And that's phase two? Get up the caps.
Yeah. Yeah, from my understanding, I, I mean.
Doesn't really matter for.